The screening plan that was presented and proposed by our landscape design consultant, Thomas and Tim.
Thanks Drew. Yeah, just to summarize the changes to the plans, I can point them out. Yeah, over here you can see as well. The original proposal, we had our planting and screening right up against the road here. We pulled that back. Basically, the three-foot berm with the fence on top will be about in line with the front of the barn and we'll wrap that around the side here as well. Back here, we pulled this screening and the fence and a good portion of the array further south from these abutting properties. Once again, a three-foot earthen berm with a solid wood fence on top. The fence will have to be engineered, stamped. A professional engineer would have to prepare design plans for that for purposes of wind load and the stability of that. We are proposing a solid wood fence from this point here all the way around along the berm, back to this point here. Then we'll transition to an eight-foot chain link fence along this portion of the property. Once again, transitioning back to the solid fence here to screen this area. Eight-foot chain link here around the woods and then we'll also, then we'll transition back to the 11-foot wood fence on the middle street side. We did, the original equipment panel was here. We had moved it down here and we ended up centering it in the middle of the array. Other minor technical plan changes that we've done, I did do three test pits last week with the board of health to review the groundwater and we revised the cross-section of our crushed stone drain on the edge of the road to be sure that that doesn't intercept groundwater. And I believe that basically summarizes the changes to the plans. We did do a number of cross-sections which are in that packet from different viewpoints and also discussed a couple more with Mr. Williams in the field, one being a section from Middle Street looking through the woods towards the field, which I do have on a board that I could present as well. Basically showing the 11-foot fence would screen the view of the array from that location.
And then, as far as the, oh great, yeah, actually, Rich, if you wanted to bring up a larger image of the screening plan. So again, we selected Virginia juniper trees being that they're deer resistant, that they grow native to Massachusetts and you grow at a rate of up to two feet a year. They provide good coverage, you know, starting from the ground level. And we've shared different ideas with the board, with different abutters. For example, at the community meeting last week in which nine abutters attended, we had an open discussion about the types of screening trees that we would like to be seen and shared these plans as recently as two nights ago with all of those abutters, again prompting the group for feedback on what they would like to see. And so, we had the good fortune of being able to meet with several of them today, including the abutter to the very northwest, Kevin Travers, the abutter directly north, Josh Medina, and then the abutter directly north of the building, Dan Hanson. So we were able to meet onsite with them and Mr. Williams, the peer reviewer, to discuss the placement of trees and to get a better feel for how those would look at installation and then over time. And then also with respect to the topography, the setbacks and the placement with respect to their homes. And so I think with that, we feel confident that it's a productive conversation and that what we'll be talking about tonight is sort of inclusive of their comments. So for example, Josh gave recommendation at the last community meeting about a type of wooden fence that we've included in this presentation. That could be one specification that we'd be open to discussing to place into the project. So what we would like to do then is kind of prompt, really kind of go from here, this two-dimensional view into the ground level view. Yeah, actually, Pat, if you'd like to-
No, sorry, Patrick. Yeah, I was just, just suggesting maybe we can cover the next iteration of this on the northeast side. This is, this would be, as well, this is the northeast corner. I guess the top right of that screen would be the corner of Middle and Tremont. And that's again in line with kind of the consensus from the meeting we had last week. Is that that row of junipers to, in front of the berm?
It looks like you've done a wraparound with the fence on those corners themselves that you asked for.
Correct. Yeah, that's right.
What is the distance from Tremont Street to the screen?
I'll go back to the site plan.
I guess there's a scale there. I don't see any numbers.
A little more than 100 feet.
150 feet maybe it looks like?
It's 130 from the property line across that to the fence. And the trees would be at approximately 115 feet off the front property line.
Just wanted to check to see if you guys had listened.
Yeah, that was a comment raised at the last, at the last community hearing. The comment was, I think, apparent that the fence close to the road felt a little overbearing to some of the neighboring residents and it was requested to bring that back off directly from the street, which we've done. And I think in the preceding kind of field analysis of this visual, part of the visual screening, we'll see in more detail actually what that looks like. We can describe the methodology that we went through to-
So everything on the south end of the array itself is going to be basically chain link? That puts the woods-
Yes. What's the budding woods, yeah. Anything that has a potential of being seen, more or less, is going to be the wood.
So there is, on your plan, you show it, there is a wood section of the fence on the south there.
Right here, because that's open and, correct. I was specific to change the line types and the callouts for where we transition back and forth and with the chain link on the latest plans.
Who's going to pick out this fence? I know it has to be engineered because it's so big, but like when you decide what fence you'd like to use, would we get to look at that fence and approve it? You know, because the look at these fences, they're all different, you know.
I don't see why we couldn't submit that first, you know, staff approval prior to building permit, whether, you know, you meet with them, whatever, we could submit it through Peter as well.
Do the abutters, abutters have any inputs instead of the ones here looking at it?
Well, I think we would continue the discussions with them and make sure they were satisfied.
I don't think we know nothing about fences.
There is a fence specifically recommended by an abutter that we've included in this presentation and it's not-
Do they all agree?
Well, I think we defer to Rich on that, but I mean, we're happy to make submissions prior to building permit to ensure that-
Yes, I mean, that would be-
I'm actually more concerned about the maintenance of the fence because it being a wooden fence, it has a tendency to go away over a period of years. And I'd like to see a plan submitted with a maintenance of it and of maybe a bond or something.
And the decommissioning bond, would that be including removing the fence, you know, at the end of 20 years? The fence will go too, everything will go. So they'll all be-
I won't worry about that.
Maintenance of the fence could easily be incorporated into the O and M of the solar facility itself, whether it needs to be stained or protected, whatever.
Yeah, we could always ask for a separate performance bond, just for, you know, fence repairs and tree replacements.
Yeah, that's an appropriate request.
I'd like to ask a question. In the previous, you talked about that a 10-foot fence was only allowed in the town. Is that, I can't recall.
We didn't see-
I think it was a 10-foot fence.
We looked in the general, yeah, we looked in the general bylaw, we looked in the zoning bylaw and we saw that. We didn't see a limitation in either. So if the board knows something we don't, then by all means-
I just brought that up. If you've checked that out, then we go by that and if it needs to be adjusted, that can-
Then the berm gets higher and I think the fence gets lower. So we can still reach that, whatever that is. So when we just heard it again, we looked through quickly the general bylaw and the zoning and then-
That'd be a question of a fence viewer. We don't have a fence viewer indicted. We really don't. It's not, yes.
A what?
A fence viewer in town. I believe it is the assessors office.
Yeah, Carol. I think it's Carol.
But that can be adjusted. They can adjust the height of the berm by a foot or-
Yeah, we can comply with whatever that-
But they're going to provide the minimum 14-foot of a solid visual screen.
Correct.
Rich, would you like to bring up the large version of the rendering? Yeah.
Could I just make two comments? Drew mentioned in his intro that we're out there to look at the location of trees today and my site visit today was basically on the screening, the effectiveness of the screening, not the location of trees. And we had two items that we can discuss in a bit that we noted when we were out in the field. But I also submitted a letter to the board this morning. Most of them are recommended conditions. The only real comment is number one, where I indicate that the landscape plan should be added to the plan set.
Accessory structure.
So that the approval considers the whole thing as one project. If we can find a legal way, we might be able to put it in the decision that defining the plans as the landscape plans and the civil plans submitted and define that as the plans for this project. And I think that will be sufficient. If I, if you could continue or we can just talk about the two changes that we talked about in the field.
We might as well just get, want to get that out of the-
One, we were-
That was on the site stuff.
Peter, could you read number four? See if they agree with number four.
Drew, have you seen, you've seen-
As of this morning.
The May 15th.
I'll have extra copies. I mean, we want to make sure that they get them to the right heights and everything. Basically, it's a backup. And if they're not, then they don't get occupancy permit until they adjust them and fix them.
Say that? Do I, well, do I like it?
This was the last-
If we get the approval this evening, you want to-
Review, right?
I'll like it.
You'll like it.
If I may?
Yep.
It'd be easier, I think, if I just mentioned that one. Wait. There was a comment from the abutter up here that, look, his house is here, so he'll be looking down here, looking out basically on the, the array will be visible in this area. We suggest in the field extending the wood fence down to here. There's an issue with the farmer utilizing the property is that the plan, if you look at the detailed plan, there's a double gate here and a double gate here, or here. I thought there was no one here. Just here and here, so that more he can access the fields and everything. Now, I suggested to them that they work that out with the owner. So they have to look at that detail to make sure that it's really fully screened from the outside. There'll be one location where you'll be able to see this place and that's basically if you stand and look straight down the driveway. If they make that adjustment here, then it should be properly screened. But, I mean, he has to have the access with the gate. It would be a chain link gate there and maybe there could be another one, a chain link fence gate up here and some wood fence between here and there to fully screen this property. Abutter in this house can potentially see into the field in this area and we discussed with him that just extending the plantings more up along here so they fully screen. There's some nice, I think there were maples or something like that there, but they would be, you know, bare in the winter. But if you put these in, some additional screen in here, which should cover that. And he seems satisfied with that solution.
Just to add to that, the detailed plans in this, that were already submitted, we are proposing to maintain all the, you know, the existing vegetation outside the fence here and take, I have no problem supplementing that with additional plantings to meet that request. And we did talk about this, this section of the fence here continuing that solid wood fence down to the corner there.
Are any of those abutters here?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the abutters.
Yeah, my only comment would be, I'm one directly across the street, envision the barn.
I'm sorry, can you just state your name and-
I'm Dan Hanson, 1034 Tremont Street. Just considering the, just understanding the visual impact from my property. I know they did some sight lines and stuff, but not considering, based on ground level, but I'm, you know, the house is three, four feet off ground, first level, as well as a second story view and possible impacts from that. They seem to be accommodating that, but I just want to make sure that that's followed and enforced or whatever, what they can continue to do to, you know, if I look out my second story window and boom, it's all there, you know. And that obviously affects the height based on the fence, the fencing berm and all that. So I mean, that's definitely a consideration for me, you know, being directly across the street from the driveway view. So they were definitely accommodating and bringing the whole project back away from Tremont. The original plot that they had was, again, as I mentioned earlier, right against the road, which is very opposing, basically. So I think bringing that back helps a lot, but I guess just also considering, you know, additional perspective, not just ground level view, but second story and things like that, the screening and things like that, so.
How, if I may ask, how satisfied are you at this point with the efforts that have been made to accommodate? I know you're going to see it from the second floor and that's usually the case in a lot of areas. I was just curious, you know, has an attempt been made to-
Yes, I said they've, they moved it back from the road and they've been considering the height of the fencing also.
Yeah, I know you'll love it a hundred percent, but-
Right. No, I mean, you're still likely to see it just because the hill rises, they should go back and, you know, fencing being at the beginning of that elevation, it's inevitable I'm going to see some, but as much as they can impact or as much as they can block is, is, you know, I'd like to see it.
Yes, I could, I can address that. Just to what I said, I know we're hopping around. There's some things in the presentation, but maybe, Rich, you have, you have that sightline. But we've taken a consideration and we've moved, moved the whole array. So, but also the current plan, is that it?
I actually, I did update your sightline. I did update his sightline.
And I think it's page, it's page 18 if you're interested. That would be from the plans.
And I actually updated it further today. Looks, it might not be in there based on our conversations in the field.
Okay, so bottom dotted line is on the graph itself, page 18. Bottom line in the graph itself shows the original, is that correct? And the second dotted line above that shows the difference in height elevation?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Those are hard words.
Yep.
That's reflecting that.
I'll show that one first, maybe that'll help out.
So it's reflecting the elevation change?
Yes. 1034 Tremont.
It has a single, there you go.
So you see the sightline, going to the highest part of the array. And then you can see how it correlates. This correlates, this sightline here, just to orient people because we'll go through this a couple times, goes through and you can see kind of it correlates to that sightline there. This would be equivalent to kind of the first floor or-
This is at eight feet and this is at roughly 20-feet-ish off the existing ground. But what I was trying to say, I did another one as well because I know you were concerned about, you know, the berm doesn't come all the way down that side. So I did one just off the berm as well from ground level. And you're looking right over the fence, barely seeing anything other than maybe the tip-top of one panel. And then your sight view just keeps going, which is what I was showing here.
So you're showing, basically you're showing a line of sight change on page 18 of, I would say approximately-
Those are two different, two different elevations where you're standing, but it's not a change.
It's not a change in elevation height there. Okay.
I think one of the things we're trying to show with this is on the second floor, you don't see-
The board members can see it. They're hard to see.
They're just bringing it closer.
Yeah.
Or if anybody, if this is your property, please come out and show it.
So this is someone standing on the ground at 00, looking straight up.
This is the full, okay. So this, each foot towards the- Going here, yeah, great.
Well, that was, it was accommodating.
Seeing where you're, using that as a fulcrum, where does your line go when you're going to see it?
And is this not the trees when they first planted?
This is the first planting and this is after five years.
We've chosen trees that are about two feet.
They're about the fence.
So we tried to accommodate.
Right, because my concern was, it's never nice off-ground level, but my house's first floor is three feet off the ground, you know, because it's the rig's foundation. So the nine feet wasn't accurate as a base point, if you will.
Can you show us the second one you did, the newest one you did for your house?
And I just, I just pulled them up higher, just to, very quickly, just to see without the berm and without, without anything in front of it, just straight fence. And you're just looking just over the top of it and then you're going to keep going.
So that would be the situation more along, where the, in this area, right here, right in here. And right in here, if they have a chain link fence in there, they'd have to have a fence in there somewhere.
Right, that's what this is representing in the 11th foot. Yeah, down that side. That's what we had.
Still have a gate, maybe a wood gate or a chain link fence gate.
I mean, we, the goal would be, that would be a wood gate. I mean, I've seen they've done the wooden gates. They support them.
And do you want to show the board the other locations or?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we might as well. So this, this is-
Who's Josh?
From straight across the street.
Is Josh, Josh, they might be doing your house now.
I'm just showing ground level.
Is this Josh's house?
No, not yet. I'm just starting right at the start. Second floor, that's probably low, but even once the evergreens are in, you're going to be looking through those.
And that's, that's five, this gets 30 feet.
That's at five. This is, this is the one from the corner, coming up the hill, on middle, the corner of middle in Tremont.
So one at this guy at eight feet height, looking through. That's the top of the fence on the berm, looking over it.
One quick question. What are the height of the panels?
The height of these panels is what we're looking for on this, on this profile, yes.
The height of the panels will be shown in the plans at 14 feet.
That's what we've got shown here.
Make sure everybody understands what we're doing.
Yes, is the, oh, everyone here, yeah.
Just because they're going to, they're going to pay for this plan, so the top of the panels. If there's any changes, you come back for modification.
And that's from the second story, once again. Yeah, the lower. This is from the ground. This is, you're Josh, right? And this is one, we're just looking at from across the street from Dan's site. From the ground, coming across. This is what Spencer's going to cover it.
Visually, that's, you know, much of what we're seeing.
Well, I did one for 1060 as well, to show the same thing. This one is only a limited view across the field. This is all vegetation and like an existing house here. That was the more question. And then the last one I did was, this is from Middle Street, like we had talked about today, on the side here. Looking, I didn't show any of the existing vegetation. I just showed fence. And that's going across there. Nope, that's still 11 foot. We're doing the whole side of the middle street.
So for what it's worth, here's what the northeast corner of the, of the proposed screening would look like with the evergreens in front of the berm and in front of the fencing. At the installation height, Rich, if you wanted to go to the next image. And then, within five years, assuming 10 feet of, you know, additional growth, we have what the junipers would look like at that time. And then similarly for the northwest corner from Mr. Travers's property, that is what the distance and location of the fence would look like on day one upon installation with installed junipers, two rows proposed in this instance. And then at five years down the line, coming over the top of the fence.
Will those create a solid visual barrier when they're after five years also?
Yeah, and that's the intent of having two rows staggered into all those spaces.
Like two rows staggered, one in front of the other?
Correct. And so I think at this point, we can maybe go through some of the photos that we took in the field to just help the board get a better feel for the, the kind of simulation exercise that we went through and shared with Mr. Williams and the abutters today. And then we did an analysis just to kind of, kind of help link parts of the site to, you know, the elevation so we can get a better understanding of truly kind of what the relative nature is between the fencing and the solar panels. So-
I'm going to just point people to it.
Great.
All right, so just to orient folks, let me just hike on that side, Rich. Just a few things that we've noted here, we did this on Monday, we also, and as Drew said, we did this on today as well. We had Mr. Caroll's tractor there and put a, you know, a pallet, a blue pallet, as you'll see in some of the other pictures. Put it, you know, it's at fourteen six, the, the panels will actually be at fourteen foot, but our, our mark is fourteen six. We did that actually a little more over here, we actually ended up standing over here with what you'll see is our kind of makeshift fencing. We had another one out here, another one over here, we did that there, here just for reference, about a thirteen foot truck, twelve and a half, thirteen foot truck. And that's just going to be for scale as we go through. And this is kind of where, this is a place that we could stand, as you can see that, well, I guess out there the field has been plowed. This is the open space that we could kind of set up our, our kind of mock fence in line with where it will actually be in the current proposal. So we'll show you some pictures of, just help give you the, the scale of what we're talking about. These are just some, some data points and they were kind of listed on the, on the previous one, but just some heights, a hundred two, ninety-four, eighty-eight, ninety-eight, and a hundred. We can just give you a little bit of idea of the elevation, how it kind of, it goes up as you go, you know, move south down the array. This here, maybe it's not, it doesn't have the fence proposal, it's giving you an idea of the thirteen foot truck, you're going to have a, you know, a fourteen foot fence, even higher than that. But you can see how you can't, you know, you can't see a fourteen foot six pallet, you've got a lot of room in between there, so you're going to have a fence that's even, even closer.
Yeah, and the, the truck in this, in this picture is about even with the, the rear of the barn, or the front of the barn rather. So it's, yeah, just to give you a sense of where it is.
And here is our makeshift fence here, a little bit of humility involved in this, holding these up here on a pretty windy day and the field is out here. So we had, we had kind of a sail out there, but I think the, the gist, it wasn't as windy today, which was, which was great, you know, right?
Should have put model sail, not model.
Yeah, exactly, for, for sure. But here you are, you can see the pallet out there, up there, which, you know, again, simulating a, you know, a module, it's actually a half foot higher.
You can see Jim standing right there where, right below the tractor label, just for, just relative sort of scale.
Sure, and then here you are on Tremont Street, looking at really what would be the fence line. You know, actually what you see here is actually short of what the fence, the fence is at the top of that, that's really PVC and you can picture that line, that's, you know, you're not seeing any modules there. We just thought it'd help you give you a visual representation.
We'll give you an A for that.
Yeah, on the, on the sailing team?
Yeah, yeah, very good. Very good.
Yeah, and it's just duplicated, maybe.
Well, it's as, as the tractor goes behind the fence, just to make it abundantly clear that this is being, that there's a significant difference between the heights. So, there it is.
Kind of reaching.
Yep.
Just by now.
Yeah, and then you just see the pallets on the very right, just to still, you know, create the relative scale of where that line on the top of the panels would be located. And here it is from the corner, again.
Yes, is Tremont Middle, looking through, a lot of room, power to go there.
And then this is from the northwest corner, right at the, the edge of the abutting properties and Jim Caroll's field.
So it's, it's just hard to see quite right with it, you're going to quit.
I think, I think we have a close up after here. Just to give people a better idea. Here we go. Yes, you can see.
There's the pallet, the tractor here, it's at, in the model fence here.
Yep.
Going through the trees, these two of which would, you know, would stay and as I said, supplement, so.
And, and again, just highlighting that this is just with the fence, but we'll also have the, the junipers there as well for additional screening. So I think with that, that we have then additional information on fencing specifications that were recommended to us by Mr. Medina of ten sixty-nine Tremont Street. So again, we're happy to, you know, consider, you know, what, what has been discussed as a preference. But just as other examples of other wooden fencing that we've seen from projects in Rochester. There's two examples that you'll find, one of which just again illustrating three foot berm with a six foot fence in, in Rochester. And just to really just highlight the example that on the right hand side, that photo is taken from Google Street View, which is a little over eight feet off the ground. You'll see that the berm and, and the fence is still able to sufficiently screen the, the panels. So just to kind of highlight again the effectiveness of pairing those elements together.
What changes that?
Uh, that is.
Thirty-three.
On page thirty-three. So I think, you know, from this point on, you know, these are a lot of materials that we've shared during the community meeting, which we're happy to kind of just discuss and just recount in the history of the project.
I mean, just if, you know, if the board would like, I was going to go through that, I know we've covered before with you, we've covered a little bit in meetings, happy to go through it. It's kind of the, the supplemental information we provided is kind of prior site plan designs, obviously we're talking about this one today, but we're happy to run through how we, you know, reduce project size and increase setbacks and, and fencing and landscape planning. We had a property value analysis that I know we walked through last week, that we.
I didn't agree with that.
Okay, all right. But we're happy to walk through that if it's necessary. You know, as we mentioned, the dual use, we have some additional information on that, again, you know, we think pretty exciting opportunity for, you know, continuing to farm the land as well as solar, which is unique to, you know, some of the other, some of the other arrays that have been erected in this town and neighboring towns as well. And then certainly just general supplemental information on solar, if the extended folks are interested.
I think the two gentlemen sitting right behind you, they can tell you that they've lost values in their homes.
Absolutely.
Since this solar project kept on.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see your, your information, the information that I collected, you know, again, it's, it's countrywide, is roughly a seven to twelve percent decrease in property value.
Exactly, and that's, that's all I've been seeing, you know.
I mean, I talked to my real estate agent, he won't even list my house, he just laughed. I'd have to disclose this is a solar farm, going behind it and, you know, probably lose thirty to fifty thousand dollars in value.
But I would like to have the information I have about property value.
Yeah, we're happy to share it, actually, we have extra copies. I think that, you know, it kind of explained where we got the information, what we looked at, but we looked at a lot, a lot of the existing projects in Dayton and surrounding towns. So for example, there's a, to start, a project on Paddleford Street in Berkeley, which you're probably very well familiar with, the farm. And that project was built in two thousand twelve, no screening, as we all know, you can, it looks like it's photoshopped into the landscape. And there were two homes that, one was two years after, I think, or maybe two to three years after, was sold at above the assessed value and at above, you know, significantly above where, you know, they purchased it. And we can, it's, you know, they bought it at two oh nine, they sold it at two forty-five, it was assessed around the same level, or actually higher, I'm sorry. And then the other home just next door to it, both directly abutting the project, ju- just directly south on the same side of the street as the project, that same home had sold around a similar time for around its assessed value. So.
You have the depression against market value, because market value and assessed value tend to differ by about ten, fifteen percent.
And those homes are right next to Route twenty-four, which I pointed out.
Right, and you're also talking, you know, homes.
Big access.
You're talking homes in the, you know, two, two fifty range, you're not talking, you know, I mean, my house is worth more than that. And, you know, so it's a significant distraction based on who would buy that house. And obviously they would prefer to live not next to a solar farm, but maybe in another development or another wooded area, you know, that's not affected by the depreciation of the solar farm.
Have any of the abudders to this project checked on home values?
I'm not really sure.
What it may or may not do?
Say it again?
What, how, what kind of impact it may or may not have?
I just reached out to a real estate agency that I know. You know, they kind of said that it's a, it's a tough game to sell a house in the area. I don't plan on moving anytime soon, so I'm not really worried about right this second, but it, you know, in the future it might be an issue, but.
I have, okay, anybody else?
I did file an abatement with the assessor in Dayton and it was denied. And there was insufficient information available to support the case one way or the other.
Yeah, okay.
And if you talk to the real estate agent, he'll give me the number, but that's again, the assessor.
Here's where we're at, because I just spoke with the building commissioner. Eight foot fence is the maximum fence allowed in town. However, he said if we, as a condition, allow an eleven foot fence and we state it is, it is for the privacy and protection of the surrounding neighborhood, he could work with the board and we could allow, he would allow an eleven foot fence. I'm going to see him tomorrow and try to get some more information on the exact wording and what you would have to provide. Generally, if a project is a utility and it's, the eleven foot fence is required to protect the array, then it's not a problem. But it could be that we can work around that and allow the eleven foot fence, but I'm going to find out more tomorrow. So if you were looking for a decision tonight, I think we should wait a little bit longer. We can answer some of these questions, I know you want to get going, but eight foot fence isn't going to cut it on this project, so. At this point, until we can establish that eleven foot fence is going to be allowed, I think we ought to hold off a little bit longer, I know you want to get going, but.
So I guess my suggestion may be to approve it with eleven and if we can't, with that language that he suggests, and if we can't get the eleven, then we'll have to come back to get some sort of modification to bring it down to where it needs to be. Just instead of keeping it open, from what I've heard, and I don't know if there are any other items or issues out there that.
Well, I still have a list here, the last one was dated today, actually, that really hasn't been addressed yet either, so.
Is that the?
We also need an approval from the police chief too, I know you got one from the fire chief, but we need one from the police chief also to know by law.
Do you send out, you know, when you get the application, does it go out to all the different departments? And if the departments don't respond in a certain amount of time, does it mean that they don't have an issue with it?
No, clearly states in our bylaw that fire chief and the police chief and the event site plan review is not complete by the planning board. So the fire chief, and the fire chief's already waiting, it's no big deal, I'm just sending the, uh, police chief a, a letter and I'm sure. You know, he, he needs no, no buyer. And, and do you have a contract with a utility company now?
Interconnection service again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
True.
Yes, we do.
Because I know that you said earlier that you were looking to possibly sell power to residents, did you say that earlier?
Community solar.
Right, and would that be allowed by National Grid because everybody's in the grid here?
Yeah, it's a big carve out in the program statewide.
So you can sell your power individually like to one of these people down the road?
Anybody.
Anybody.
You want it?
No, I live in North Dayton, we have a much cheaper rate. We get electricity from Tottenham.
Okay.
We get our water from Tottenham too.
Yeah, but who serves, who does fire?
We have our own fire department.
Fire, Dayton, is it Dayton?
North Dayton Fire District.
So we get a fire district too.
Actually, I have two more questions. I'm guessing the solar is going in prior to the crop, correct?
Correct.
All right, so what is, well, I was a farmer, but I forgot. At what, or what is the last date in order to have a successful crop they need to be planted?
Uh, I think that's probably a good question for the farmers, but.
That's where I was going.
So I think you asked a question of, of solar first or the, or the crop, the crops being planted.
No, I meant, when would you, you're raising butternut, correct?
Yeah.
When would you normally plant butternut to get a successful crop? It comes in the fall usually, correct?
The, the land being plowed now.
Okay. So what he's trying to say is. What date would you plant in order to get a yield of more or less?
Memorial Day usually, Jim.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
But there's no way they're going to have these things in the ground by Memorial Day. No, it's going to take quite a while to put these things in the ground. It's going to take better part of six months. Do you have these pot, these panels, they're all lined up and ready to roll? You guys can like start digging next week?
No, there's, there's, there's lead time, I mean, probably anywhere.
So Jimmy can plant his corn?
Yeah.
Or his butternut or whatever.
Realistically, we wouldn't probably even start construction until October.
Right.
Oh, my.
At best.
Right.
Because, yeah, there's lead time, there's like a twenty week lead time to get transformers manufactured, for example, and to order panels from, you know, all over.
So he's going to plant his butternut pronto, whenever it needs to go in the ground, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
He's already pulling the field.
And then if these people come along, they're just going to put their arrays in amongst the butternut, or possibly.
In all likelihood, what will happen is, is if this butternut crop will be harvested.
Yeah, and then they'll stop.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not going to hurt your, your crop for this year?
Correct, and the design of this.
Just the weather is.
Right, the weather is, but. The design, the planting plan, that's got to be approved by, by Mass Farm and Agricultural Resources, will be done in such a way that it's conducive to the array being installed this fall, winter, and planting accordingly.
So if we continue this, it does not affect your crop or your revenue derived from raising it. So I was concerned, this was my concern, by holding you up, we're going to hold him up and deprive him of his earnings for his crop.
So I guess, I mean, maybe, there may be even more severe consequence to holding it up, but I just frankly don't know the timeline that you're on of getting into the program to make sure that there is in fact a program to get into for Jim so that he can subsidize his crops in the future. And so that's where, you know, obviously I'm going to push for a closing approval tonight with conditions suitable where, you know, eleven feet, we come back and see you. Police chief, we supplement the file because we don't anticipate it being a problem. So what, because when they get their approval, then they can go into that smart program to make this real. Until that, you know, and I understand you're going through a summer schedule, so we're looking at probably a month from now, when we've, I mean, I think they've done a pretty good, if not very good job of, of working with the town, neighbor, everybody trying to address these issues. So whatever we could do to get to an approval tonight to make Jim's job a little bit easier to make sure he gets that other stream of income, I mean, that, we'd appreciate it, frankly.
That's what both solar farms said prior to this.
I'm, I'm sure.
And I'll comment, you know, sorry to interrupt you, but it was commented here earlier that, no, you guys are pushing, you guys are on an incentive. Landowner's on an incentive, you know, I, I don't think making a decision tonight here is warranted and we're back into the same old rush, rush, rush. Where, you know, you guys obviously have some homework to do, you're proposing something right now that does not comply to our bylaws and should not be approved. You know, I, as, as a resident of Dayton, you know, we're putting these massively tall, you know, higher than an eighteen wheeler panels in. You know, what does a smart plan and program entail? You know, are we going to actually see the land farmed? Or is this something that we'll be seeing a government subsidy, you know, which is good for the landowner, not necessarily good for the town?
But can I ask one question?
No.
Where are the landscape plans?
That's what was, we, we, we did submit those today.
Which were?
But, but we're on the board as well here with the, the yellow sheet with the plant thing, accounts.
Yeah, and, and I don't oppose having an extra meeting next month either, even though we're going on a summer schedule. As long as it's going to be a light meeting.
Yeah. I mean, in two weeks from now.
It may be two weeks from now. We could. I, I, you know. Do that for it. I'm starting to warm up to your plan. Okay, as long as the residents are happier, right? Because I, I, I know, it worked for them.
Of course, no, we understand, I mean, that's why we've worked so hard.
You know, and you guys are doing a good job and.
Thank you.
You're offering a lot and you're making it look like you want to work with us. And as long as you're in agreement with, you know, Peter's number four. And as long as you're in agreement with, you know, Peter's number four.
So we could talk about that whenever you're ready. I mean, that, just, it's that, it's that last, that last sentence that just seems. So the last sentence read, "The occupancy permit shall not be issued until the effectiveness of the visual barriers is confirmed." And so it's that piece there that just, without any like objective measure of what that effectiveness is, by the time that those are in and the panels are in, that's a lot of money that has been spent to get it to that point.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and so that, it's just concerning to have that. I mean, we can do.
First, maybe, maybe should we, if the effectiveness has shown on the information submitted.
I think that's fine, yes.
I'm not adverse.
They, they, they can, if you have no files, you know, and they're saying that that's the performance that this system, this design has gotta give us, then obviously that condition can be, any of my suggestions can be modified.
I think, no, but I think that's, and that, cause we appreciate the sentiment behind it, just wanna be careful of how it's worded. No, no, but I think the idea is a great one, because we're gonna be building in accordance with the plans that we provided to you with the information that we provided.
Let me, let me say this.
And getting back to the plans, I think, I'm, go ahead, I'm sorry. Alright, I think we need, typically we like to have stamped plans, so I think we should have real landscape, a real set of landscape plans to support what's being done here. Maybe one sheet, but it'll lay everything out and should be stamped by a, you know, landscape architect.
Okay.
Is the screening going in first before the panels or vice versa? We're gonna have to look at these things for a number of weeks or months before they put the.
That's a very good question, sir.
Yeah, in, in other projects, we've staged putting in the fencing, you know, prior to the project, and I think we're gonna have to respect that we want the success of the, um.
Plantings?
The plantings, right, to, to thrive, so it might be best to reserve that until after. But I mean, I think that installing the fence is, you know, a, you know, kind of a first stage of the construction process to at least mitigate construction level visual impacts.
Big faith measure.
I think that that's, I mean, again, we've done it in other towns.
Right, exactly, you're not gonna plant stuff in November, December, so it's not gonna be a problem. That's your timeframe for starting.
Who's the best person to contact regarding the eleven foot fence? Cause I will work with him tomorrow to try to, um, see exactly what he wants.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, you've contacted companies, I think, already.
Oh, and he's just gonna tell us.
Building commissioner's gonna say you can do this.
Exactly what he's looking for.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I think if you wanna reach out to Rich, it'd be great.
My info, you have my info.
Is it a cock?
I don't, but she's got my info, she's got all my info.
Alright. So I do have a question, so, um, and I was curious about this, is, do we know the timeframe of when the state is gonna end the program? Does he have to be in by September thirty or July first? Do we know, does the gentleman in the back, though, you must work directly with the state? Have you, have you done this before with the state in other, in other cities and towns, or do we know the parameters?
I defer to them on the, on the energy part, my part is on the agricultural part.
And that's what I'm dealing with, that's what I'm asking, the question is, is that what is the applicant's timeframe in order to be included with the acceptance of being in the program with the state? Do we know that?
So there's a, there's a whole process of, of approval that MDR, Mass Farmer's Agricultural Resources goes through.
That we're dealing with right now in the community preservation, we have a project that we have an API that's gone on for two years before the state has got back to us with any approval. So that's my question, is how long is this gonna take?
So it, it, it can take, but it, the issue is getting that place in the queue, which is what this is a precursor for. When you have that, you can then go to the, to MDR and.
So you just follow the next steps for the application process? So once you're in, you're in, and then you just follow the rest of the application process?
Correct. And the other pro, the agricultural projects that we've permitted in, in, in other towns, I mean, those permits have conditioned that this is, this is, it's made explicit, this is an agricultural solar project, right? So this idea that we're gonna like get our permit and go build a standard project, that's just out the window, it's just, that's not.
I'm just gonna ask one more question, this doesn't fit the scope of what we're talking about right now, but, um, since this is a pilot program that's done in conjunction with UMass at Amherst, uh, have there been any numbers done on the farmers that are involved with this program to say that prop yield is X, Y, and Z, that type of thing? That's just my own personal.
As, as a matter of fact, yes, so as, as, part of this approval through MDR is that you have to have, you just have to submit a predetermination application with a farm plan, showing your nutrient management, IPM, all this stuff. Then they do an onsite with UMass extension experts in that particular crop. That has been, and then they, so it's back and forth, back and forth. There's a lot of oversight to this before they, they issue a determination. After that determination is, is issued, it's, it's kinda like where we're at, everyone's kind of in that same boat, because this is a newer program. But there's no question that there's, there's, there are recording requirements annually to the state for the lifetime.
And, and to Ian's point on the, the solar energy side, like if there's no agriculture, our rate gets cut by a third. I mean, effectively, I mean, it's a very significant hit to the, you know, to the economics of the project in any given year. So we have every motivation to subsidize the farmer, work with the farmer, and report all of the farm yield information every year, or else we lose a third of our revenue, which no one can tolerate.
How will that work down the road, let's say, the farmer retires? And you don't get nobody in there, will you lose a third at that point?
So we, I think recognizing, you know, that.
Yeah, so you need to keep this smart plan moving.
Yeah, so we, you know, um, reserve the right to bring new farmers in to keep the land in production, and we've kind of gotten ahead of that, you know, uh, uh, need by starting conversations with, with other folks who have expressed interest, who are already farming, some locally, who may be looking for new land. So I think part of the advantage of, of having Jim involved is he knows this site better than anybody, so while he's still farming, being able to bring in new people who can learn from Jim, so it's not like they're just, you know.
So the state's amenable to, to someone else coming in and finding that in a land lease program then, is what you're saying?
Correct. The risk is on.
On profits.
Is on us. To make, to ensure. And the, uh, the, the article that we included in, in here is supplemental information, if you're curious, you can look it up, and it'll tell you a lot about some of the yield information, some of the crops that have already been grown in the program here in Massachusetts at UMass, it's been in operation since two thousand and eleven, so.
I wanna reach out to the butters again, if there's any other things tonight they wanna discuss, okay.
No, just, just, just a concern, the gentleman's comments over here of past projects makes me a little nervous.
Yeah.
Saying that, you know, promises were made, they said the other stuff, and, and that they're understanding that they're trying to be as accommodating as possible, but, you know, always interesting to hear from past projects, successes and failures, and just understanding the risks involved.
Under the special permitting authority, which gives us that authority, that we can put in restrictions or that type of thing, um, and that they won't fall.
Yeah, and that gets back to an issue I was just gonna talk about, we haven't discussed any of the bonds.
Right.
Right.
Well, we have to, uh, over several meetings, you know, the decommissioning, we've discussed the landscape bond, which we're, we're open to. I think it's a matter of how we structure this to ensure that, you know, interests are protected, um, over the long term.
How much?
That's the question.
Yeah, we like, well, ten thousand, and that was, that bond was for a project that really doesn't require a lot of screening. So, and, and with the amount of fence and the amount of screening that you're gonna have, I think it requires more than ten thousand, but, you know, I don't wanna be the one to make that decision. If you ask me, I would say twenty thousand.
Correct.
Split to Peter.
Split to determine what.
Value to put on that. I don't know anything about trees. Well, the fence would be quite.
Not the trees, it's not the trees that we should worry about.
The fence, yeah.
The fence is the issue. And I, I honestly think that twenty thousand is a good number. We have a problem with twenty thousand?
Uh, maybe thirty.
I like the way this is gonna look. Well, there'll be, I mean, there'll be insurance, there'll be insurance on the fencing structure, I mean.
The insurance will be a lot?
You will have an insurance policy on a fence?
There would be insurance.
For what? For what, for storms?
Probably, yeah, I can't, I mean, I can't imagine if they're gonna.
Okay, you wanna. There's gonna be some warranty, I'm, I'm sure there's a warranty associated with it, provided that you need a, for the maintenance and repair. But it's still better than nothing, how about fifteen?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five? Oh, I don't know, I'm going in the wrong direction.
Take twenty and run.
Honestly, that's what I was gonna establish, twenty-five thousand, it would be more than sufficient, cause you have to take into account this, how much is that cost gonna be to be, to install that fence and also those tree plants? So you wanna look at that number, and you're gonna have to go to a higher number.
But that's only in place if either the landowner or the applicant doesn't do it.
That's right, we're never gonna cut that money as long as you maintain it, like you said. Yeah, it's just gonna stay there.
So you don't mind, a bond is fine. It'll also bear interest too, so.
Come on, yeah.
So I guess think about either twenty or twenty-five.
Fifty grand?
Fifty grand. Yeah, we, we better sign up for this.
We're gonna take the twenty and jump.
Yeah, it's a decommissioning. We'll take, oh, okay, okay.
Decommissioning.
Yeah, I mean, twenty for the landscape, yeah.
Twenty for the landscaping bond.
Done, hit the gal.
Uh, it's the board which should vote on it.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that Louis, Louis Solar Producing, twenty thousand dollar landscape bond.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made, second in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
In regards to decommissioning fee, um, we don't know what the cost could be twenty years down the road, and, um, you know, I've seen the town of Donovan has done solar arrays, as you very well know, and some of their arrays for decommissioning fees are in excess of a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah, but I think the building commissioner probably gave us a number of that.
How big are those?
White lodge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
White lodge.
I mean, that's, that's a lot, I don't see.
But then again, you don't know what that possible cost could be down the road.
Yeah, but I mean, there's salvage value.
Do we need to set that price now, with this meeting? No.
We can do it next meeting, but I'm saying, you know, this is like I was thinking of a to-do list right now.
Cause that's what I'm getting, right, so there's a stamp plans, there's a police chief letter, the fence item, uh, landscape bond with taking care of the commissioning bond, just to, you know, make sure we revisit that with, uh.
Yeah, and by then, most of the things that need to be crafted probably be compared to two weeks.
Yep, is there anything else?
Well, actually, three weeks.
We need stamp, stamp landscape.
Landscape wise, it'll be new lighting.
It'll be June fifth.
There'll be no lighting on any of these arrays, like you go by at night, there'll be no, no lights, right? Okay, just curious, I was just curious.
Um, just on the decommissioning, we did submit a decommissioning report with a, with an estimate, which was reviewed by the consultant. Um, the cost was, um, just under thirty-one thousand dollars per megawatt, which is.
Per megawatt?
Per megawatt, yeah. So it's eighty-six thousand in year, twenty-five dollars, that accounts for salvage value. Um, uh, removal of all the equipment, everything and restoring the land.
Okay, I, I think.
We vote on that.
Okay. What was that, a hundred percent?
Can I make a motion?
Eighty-six, three.
June the fifth. June the fifth, yeah, let's, let's continue to June the fifth. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to continue this public hearing until June the fifth. Except P M.
I just wanna know if there's anything else on the list, I wanna make sure that this is, you know, when we come back, that's.
Okay, when we come in.
You will be the only person on our agenda that evening?
Correct.
It'll be a special meeting.
Thank you, we really appreciate it.
But you made a motion, right?
Did it ring to the last? Please.
You said for a motion to continue to June fifth?
Yep.
Okay, all's in favor of continuing the public hearing?
Before we close the, the public hearing, I'd like to ask the butters one more time, if anyone in the room that abuts this project has anything further they'd like to add, that they haven't added already to meetings tonight.
No, they were good. Okay.
Great.
Motion's made in second to continue to June fifth, special meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, see you on June fifth.
Thank you very much.
Just to clarify, is, was there a punch list provided on what we're gonna prepare for next time?
Stamp landscape plans, police chief letter, response for the fence, and just figuring out what it is. Landscape bond set, it sounds like the commissioning bond set, and I think so, three deliverables.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Give this to you, you want this, two, two probably both, the last two things I said.
When this town's.
Mine is screened. I just, I just hit me on.
So you'll be.
Thanks that off. And I think, yeah, of course, I think we gotta, we're gonna have to filing a plan. Thanks a lot.
Someone's been here all night waiting.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
I mean, you guys did a much better job preparing. It wasn't a very neighbor.
Oh, yeah, there we all be quiet tonight.
I sent, I sent it all emails that we had.
As you know, we've.
Sorry? It's not a by law, it's supposed to.
That's why I say, this is what we do.
You know, I told him, I don't like the telephone.
There's a legal term for that, I can't, they're gonna.
The worst was.
Okay, we're gonna begin the public hearing, which is basically. On the residential subdivision for Stephen and Kerry Jones, seven twenty-one Middle Street. Good evening, yeah, sorry, couldn't wait, but.
Good evening.
Hello there.
Rachel Smith from Otis Dyer's office, representing Stephen and Kerry Jones. So at the previous meeting, um, it was obvious that the board had some reservations about approving a forty-foot strip all the way out, as was shown on the definitive subdivision. So we came back with this alternative plan, as it was kind of hinted, maybe we should, hopefully. So this plan, um, would leave a hundred and fifty feet with lot one, and would reduce the frontage on the access strip to fourteen point nine seven feet. And then it would widen out to the forty feet after it gets back a little bit, so that he can get around the pieces of ledge. Yeah, the ledge and everything like that, but it would leave a hundred and fifty feet with lot one, which is required in the business zone, and would substantially reduce the frontage of the access strip, which would eliminate a lot of things you were concerned about, you know, like possible forty B or solar, or the other concerns you had, it would just strictly be access to the back lot.
Okay. Plans are funny here, I wanna read a, just came in yesterday from, uh, Brian Winter, attorney who's here last time. He states, "I think this submission is fine. It is consistent with our previous comment that an A and R showing the narrow access parcel labeled as non-buildable would be legal, because the plan would show only one valid, valid building lot." He mentions Met C General Arch out of forty-one, section A one L, definitions of lot and subdivision. Not a, not a division into two or more building lots. This avoids the issues raised before, when this was submitted as a subdivision plan. So, uh, there it is in front of you. I personally don't see anything wrong with it at this point. It is a business zone, it's a hundred and fifty feet frontage, is what's required for business district, so.
So my question is, so there is no problem with this being narrowed down to forty-nine?
No, it's not.
So it's a non-build, so you're still gonna have five, it's still gonna be used as a five road access?
Right, right, and that should be, that's enough to get the larger farm equipment in. I mean, it's pretty minimal, but mostly should be alright.
With the fifteen feet coming in, should be all those, make that turn.
Yeah. You wouldn't wanna go much smaller than that to get, and.
No, not at all.
It actually worked out better this way, honestly, but.
They just, they've got a buyer for the house, they wanna get rid of the house.
Okay.
You guys are okay, I make a motion to approve it. I second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the A and R submitted by Otis Dyer. Okay, motion's made in second, approved, the A and R submitted by Otis Dyer for property at seven twenty-one Middle Street for Stephen and Carrie Jones in Dayton, Massachusetts. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carrie's.
Okay, so I think there's just maybe two small housekeeping things on the question, so we need to officially, uh.
Withdraw.
Withdraw.
Yep.
The definitive subdivision.
You need to withdraw the other, withdraw.
So. Do you need something signed on that, or is that just?
Yep, I do need something signed. While you guys are signing, I need three of those plans signed. Here's the MyLars, they're reporting. And then here's sort of the blue, uh, it'll be in.
And you need the applicant to sign that.
You need to check too, right?
Well, that's the next, that's the next thing I wanna talk about, just wait. We did, first of all, we need to take care of this, uh.
I'll sit there.
Yeah, come and see. So, um, I'm just gonna handle right. Your withdrawal, your withdrawal, right? Okay, so we.
Twenty-two? No.
Carrie.
Fifteen, fifteen. It's been a long meeting.
Withdraw, thank you sir.
Twenty nineteen, right?
Yes. You can tell you didn't bring a hair in, it's.
Thank you.
Serious.
And that's what was mine, I was signed, I'll take that.
Not that, yeah, did it.
And then it's gonna have to get recorded, it's a registry. I do that, okay. All right, I'll see if I can get them to.
Yes, ma'am.
They're getting present, I could, I would need a motion to approve. I think two. Accept that.
What's that?
Withdrawal.
Withdraw, well, that would, that falls under the public hearing.
Should we make a motion to accept it?
You need to make it, yes, let them sign it first and then.
Yeah.
We have three of those?
So we don't, we have them or we don't?
What's that?
Plans.
There should be three plans and then the MyLar.
Oh, there's some beneath that.
Now, no more than that. Mine is being passed around, did you sign it, anybody?
We're gonna get to it, no.
No, this is the only one so far.
There's two.
Some of the other plans?
Well, you might have one in your.
I have one.
Everyone has one, everyone has one in their package.
You want my?
And I don't know how many copies you need, but you don't have to give me a signed paper copy. I mean, the MyLars.
Right, no, I need the three for our records. The MyLar is gonna go with you to the registry, like, recording. So this is the. So this is just saying I need to find.
I wanted to keep a copy of these plans so I could see where all the deer are.
Definitely won't be on that solar farm.
No.
Or the turkeys. No, they're not, that's my property. The deer are on my property.
I know they're not. All the ones Jeff Ashcroft keep missing.
I would request a, okay.
Right, that guy can't hit the side of the plant.
It was, um, I, I still have to sign two more of them. I need to sign.
Isn't that all of them? Okay.
I think we already have.
You got enough?
I think so.
Oh, everybody did this one?
Yes, I did, he had to do it all, but she can't do anything on red, red is not legal.
I didn't sign that one.
Because the public hearing carries on.
It, uh.
The public hearing is all.
Do you sign that one? Do you sign that one?
I'll sign that one.
Except, there are. A and R's going to affect the training, it gets prevented in a court tonight. That goes into effect, you go down to the registry and record it and provide me with a copy of the receipt. To have someone on it done to you, yeah.
Everybody wants to take over share, I don't know.
Once you're chairman of a board, you never get a.
He's the chairman of everything. Tonight, we just gave you a headache.
Yep.
Chairman of Board of Health, was the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, was chairman of.
Chairman of the, uh.
Action Committee.
Chairman of the Board.
The, uh.
Board of Health Chairman, I hope, you don't see anybody fighting to take that.
No, it's not a front position. We don't need this one.
I don't either.
I'll have it.
Affordable health.
I don't wanna give that one up. Forty-week committee. Right after someone, Mr. Razor, on each end.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Would she be doing the registry?
Get salt stuff.
I, I work in Rainy.
I bet you gave it away too.
I did that MyLar.
Thank you.
I think we should all get with it.
Are you planning that for the registry?
Do I agree with that?
Uh, we can do it either way.
Um, it's usually by the applicant.
Well, sorry, that's.
So if you want, just either, once you're done with the recording receipt, you just either email it to me.
Everybody does.
Fax it to the wish.
The guy next to forty bunch of ties.
I've got your email.
So if you could just email me the receipt.
I tried to get a T-shirt, I wouldn't give it.
Because like I said, that's my only concern.
Because we just put a ten percent.
Before we need, before, before, I'm sorry, Rachel.
Yes.
Rachel, before you do that, first I need a motion to accept the withdrawal of the subdivision.
I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the subdivision.
Second.
Do I identify the subdivision there?
Seven twenty-one Middle Street, Navin Lot seventy-five. I'm sorry, John.
Motion made in seconded to accept the withdrawal of the subdivision of twenty-seven, seven twenty-one Middle Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Carrie's, thank you very much.
Okay, and one more question, um, in light of the fee that the Joneses paid for the subdivision application, would you be willing to waive the separate fee for the Form A application? Normally the Form A would have required a application fee of, what was it, a hundred and fifty?
I think it was a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty, but they've already paid, uh, eleven fif- eleven hundred and fifty dollars.
Eleven fifty for this.
For the subdivision, so now that we're swapping the plans, would you waive the additional hundred and fifty for the Form A?
Is there a motion to waive the hundred and fifty dollar fee for Form A?
I'll make a motion to waive that fee.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. Motion's made in second of the waive the fee, uh, at seven twenty-one Middle Street for the Form A.
Of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Of a hundred and fifty dollars. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for hanging out the salon, sorry about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't even eat supper, I would've known, I would've left and gone to eat.
Sorry, Steve.
But it, but it's worth it.
I said, oh, it should be a quick meeting.
You know what they tell me, right? You can pour them into a few meals.
Maybe you guys should do an office group, part of your meetings.
I was gonna ask for your public input, but you're still here, so.
Yeah, I'm all right.
I don't have anything more to say.
You're better now.
You don't believe in the meeting until.
You read the correspondence that I wanted to read? Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May first?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May first of twenty nineteen.
Second.
Okay, motion made second, approve the minutes of May first, twenty nineteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion Carrie's. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Nope, 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 sorry.
You all got more?
I'm sorry, there was a public input, but the, uh, Rachel had to leave because it was going a little too long. But, um, I think in.
Oh, I believe that might have been with the trails situation.
The Trails Committee, so, um.
I'm gonna look at it for a minute.
There was a question of a site plan review on their proposed parking area. Behind Alice's last stop.
Well, well, they can come in for a site plan review, a trails committee?
Well, they were just submitting this.
Question before we even bother to look at this. This belongs to the town of Dayton.
Correct.
Yes, it is.
Correct.
Yes, it is.
Correct, so.
Have they, do they have authority to go forward with this?
Uh, right now it's just exploratory, they're just looking for the board's expertise. Does that sound, yeah?
Yeah.
Um, so, in the email that I received, he's on the Dayton, um, Jeff, Jeff.
Jeff Cavalo.
Jeff Cavalo sent an email, and for the record, he's on the Dayton Trails Committee at a recent meeting. They were chatting with Tom Ferry about a parking area project that would augment the planned DCR Sweet Snoll Trail that is planned to go in behind Sweet Snoll with the South Lake terminating on Somerset Ave behind Alice's last stop. The Trails Committee would like to put in a parking area where people can park a vehicle temporarily and walk or bike the DCR trail going north from here. In the future, this area could also serve as a depot for a bike share program where people could check out a bike for the trail. Even further in the future, this area would be one of many parking areas along the rail trail that we would eventually like to see constructed in Dayton, i.e. Tonton River Trail.
You're willing to buy the property from the town of Dayton for this? The property has a value of two-one-and-twelve-nine. Well, the other thing is.
We did not talk about anything about that. He's just, at the moment, they're focused on the parking area at the trailhead and Tom suggested we reach out to you to, he reached out to you to ask about where we start with this idea. He mentioned that we might need a site plan review, but to talk to you first. So I think all of this is very preliminary, um, trying to figure out, obviously, there will be discussions about buying the land. I think the question came in for our department on the site plan is minor versus major. Cause I did explain that to you.
No trucks is going in there, just a parking lot?
No, he said just, um. I, I, um, let's see, your proposal does indeed require a site plan review. However, we need to determine if it will be major or minor. To establish that, please advise how many parking spaces you're proposing. So he was only talking about doing parking and like a, a bike rack to park your bikes.
You know, my opinion, if they're putting a cart out of the horse, there is no trail, there is no trail there. No horse either. Right. And if you did put a parking, that, that's the old railroad bed, which leads to a trestle, which could be very dangerous to children.
Which, which probably still could be owned by Old Colony Railroad, because we know what the mess happened with Bright Cove.
Right.
Okay, so we don't wanna, you know.
They're jumping way ahead of the game, I think.
So I think the question to the board regarding the site plan review though, is whether it's a major versus a minor. And he's proposing only three to five spots max. That says minor. That says minor, however, that, I think that's the only thing that we're directing to the planning board right now. As far as the purchase of the land and.
It's already owned by the town.
And that stuff, they, they would have to negotiate that part with them. Right now, we were just, our emails were just in the discussion of the site plan review. And A, is it required, which I think we've already determined it is. And B, is it major or minor? And I think if it's three to five, it's minor. The other stuff would be for my understanding, I don't know, CP, I don't know how that would go. I don't think that's for the planning board to determine, correct? As far as the ownership of the land and what they.
No, that's up to the Board of Selectmen.
Exactly.
Yeah, it was.
But, say they got all that, I think he's just looking at, from the planning board's perspective, what he needs.
The bylaw says if it doesn't generate the need for more than ten parking spaces, it is deemed a minor site plan.
Right. So that would be, so I would say minor.
I, I suppose, yeah, I suppose it would be a minor, but then now that's, uh, conservation issues and many other issues out there, but. Yeah, it's, it's possible, like you say.
This is not gonna be paved.
It's another thing for the town to maintain.
He didn't indicate any of that, um.
Well, yeah, but my, my point is that because if it's paved, then that creates, that's a whole different animal.
I think that's a whole different animal. He didn't indicate any of that, of course, again, it's still all just preliminary, um, he was just.
Yeah, because there's not even a trail there. So why would you put a parking lot if there's no trail?
Because they're gonna put this house over there.
With the horses. Right. Make a motion to adjourn.
Good spot for nip bottles to be thrown, right?
Okay, there is a motion to adjourn, is there?
Second.